Good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. And because we -- call meeting to order. Let's have the pledge allegiance first. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
Open the corner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Westfall, would you like to call the roll?
Sure. Carol Breer, Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Present.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown, Mike Page.
Present.
Dobby Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Ager.
Thank you. And before we approve the regular agenda, I have a motion to add an additional executive session to the agenda to discuss an individual employee's performance and compensation pursuant to the personnel exception under Kansas Open Meetings Act with potential action to follow.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. And before we start, there is -- we've started a process that says we -- something we should have been doing, but board norms and protocols. We agreed to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We agreed to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. We agree to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. We agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And we agree to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. Thank you. Good morning, Dr. Faust.
Good morning. So I -- get back to where I was. I had the opportunity last week to visit NCUST. Not NCUST, well, I did visit with NCUST, which was part of -- that's part of my updates. I was in Salt Lake City, Utah, and then Provo. We were there with some of the academic department looking at Imagine Learning. And Imagine Learning is a program that we're using in a couple of our elementary schools when we're doing a pilot program there. It's working specifically with our reading. And what we noticed is that our students do have some reading deficiencies. And this program does provide them with intervention when used properly. And so we're going back, reevaluating how we're using the program and making sure. So we're having principals of those 12 schools come in on Friday for two hours to get specific training because we missed it on the first time that we did it. And so we're going back to make sure that our system is using the program the way it's designed. And we're putting first, the instruction first. And, you know, looking to get away from, and Dr. Johnson, I'm going to use his word, he's with NCUST, we're going to try -- our attempt is to get away from planning for intervention and start planning for enrichment. Because when you plan for intervention, you're planning for failure. And so we don't need to go into schools looking for the intervention. We need to do our first teach first and making sure that that's quality education. The second part, our principals, I think it was another 12 schools, got to work with NCUST. And NCUST is the national -- oh, I'm going to say it wrong. The National Center for Urban School Transformation. And they were here, and they're working with our, some of our principals who are our CSI schools. Those are the schools that are defined as our, some of our lowest performing schools here in the district. And they are doing specific training with them, with KLN, working closely by them. And so the kickoff was great. They did the walkthroughs with the principals. And I've heard nothing but raving reviews from NCUST, from KLN, and from our EDs who are working with them and how the principals are just excited to have that specific professional development help with their schools. So last week was a week full of good educational best practices for our school leaders and our teachers, along with snow, ice, all those good things. And so one of the things that I will share is this. All of the schools in Wyandotte County were in. I know that the media was misrepresenting and saying that we were the only one in. All of the schools. For those of you who don't know, we do not make the decision in isolation. It is along with, you know, 12 other superintendents in the metro area. And we all get on and we talk. And we have transportation. Chief and I have been talking. And so one of the things that I have to say is this. A lot of our certified staff don't live in Wyandotte County. And that is, you know, a misfortune because their streets, you know, they were, they were fine over here. Can't say that much about the, our side streets, which that's a conversation that I believe that all of you need to have with your representatives at the unified government to talk about why they can't clear these side streets. But we cannot close school because teachers live in another district and can't get to work. We know that when they signed up, when they signed the contract, they're signing the contract to work here. And so when school is open, school is open. And I know that probably a lot of you got calls. People were saying that the school, they cannot bring their children to school with them. That's a liability. If your child does not go to that school, you cannot bring your child to work with you. It's not on a snow day or bring your child to work day. It's actual work day for students to learn. So we need to make sure that we are exercising all the laws and not practices. And so I want to make sure that we get that out in the open, that it's not a, it's not an easy call when we are calling school. I'll promise you that. That's something that I lose a lot of sleep over. And we're going to do what's best and not put anyone in jeopardy. But it's a, it's a team decision. And so we're going to be working on our media. I know that our media had not updated their websites, and they were getting us confused with Kansas City, Missouri. And they often do that, and I'm sure you know that. And we were in, and they were saying we were out, and they were saying we were out before we'd even made a decision. So we're going to be working with those media outlets to make sure that they get the right updated information. So I just want to make sure that we all know that, you know, we want what's best for all of you at all times, and we're not going to put anyone in jeopardy. And just know that there's, looking like there's more snow to come. And we will get back on the telephones, and we will have Miguel and Transportation out. We'll have Chief and his team out. We'll be talking with the 12 other superintendents for about 20 minutes on a conference call, and we'll come to another decision. Carol Levers and I talk on the telephone, usually through text, going back and forth over to close. But it's a whole operation behind the scenes before you get the verbiage of, "School's open or school's, well, school's closed." And as I was sharing with Melissa, with the media, it's not against the law to come to school. It's not against the law. So when they're wanting, "Why are you in school?", my question is, is it against the law to come to school? We have to come to school. When we don't come to school, we have to make up those days. And there are times where already, we'll be putting out communication on the two days at the end for our seniors when they have to come to school. And that should be either posted by the end of this week or by the end of today. But we will definitely be having those. And if we miss another day, we're going to be looking at, you know, adding hours, or we're looking at Wednesdays. So we have to make sure that we do what the state says because, again, there's federal law and state law that requires us to come to school. So I want to thank everyone for today. We are looking forward to a great board meeting. And, you know, direct all your, your questions to the board.
No, he didn't.
They already do.
Thank you. Let me circle back. What is the acronym, NCUST?
NCUST.
Is that a K?
I, U-N.
U-N.
I'm sorry. N-C-U-S-T.
Okay. What's the duration of that, that training?
So that is, through KLN, we'll be going through the end of the school year.
And what's the regularity?
They come monthly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. My communication, I had the opportunity, along with many of our other board members, to, on Saturday, attend the Saturday Academy. And this is the same, with the parent breakfast. So it was very crowded. It was at the Community College. And some of the same students enjoyed the worm experiment. So it was, it was fun. And again, the program that Marsha Promroy and the University of Kansas and the Community College, and I'm sure I'm leaving out some of the partners, but, but very important. And of course, that and others, we will revisit when we, we look at the budget. Okay. Thank you. Other board members?
Yeah. I attended, Jenian was there too, Wyandotte girls' basketball game. Then we, the next day, Washington basketball game. Visited Bridges last Monday, Bridges and Fairfax. And then I went to the New Chelsias Renewable Energy Project that they had. Quite entertaining. You know, people think of a lot of things for renewable energy. And then Harmon Sports Heart of Fame in the basketball game. It's always a pleasure to go to Harmon and see how they recognize their sports past and present. And then Sarah, Sarah, she said we went to the.
Saturday Academy.
Saturday Academy. And then later on that evening, went to F.L. Schlegel's basketball game. Quite busy.
Like Ms. Brenda said, we were at Bridges and Fairfax and many basketball games. And I got to visit kindergartens and first curates and preschools last week. The preschools are always exciting to go to. Just, they're so young and so full of energy, and they want to learn, and they don't hesitate to tell you that. Of course, you get lots of hugs too, because they think you're grandma. And then the Saturday Academy and the Harmon Hall of Sports of Fame. They also honored Mr. Daniels, a longtime band instructor at Harmon. He used to be known, back when my kids were there, as having the best jazz band in the district. And he's still involved with, with kids. I believe he lives in Louisiana now. Down where it's warmer. But it's, it's always a pleasure to go out and see our, our parents and our kids.
Okay. I also attended New Chelsea for the Renewable Energy Project that the students were working on. And the energy that they were focusing on primarily was sunlight. And I attended the Saturday Academy. I also attended the Harmon Hall of Fame Award presentation, and then went to the basketball game. And then on Saturday afternoon, I had an opportunity to meet with the NEA President, Jen Holt, along with Dr. Nguyen. And we sat down with Mr. Covington as well, and also the HR rep, sorry. And so we sat down and talked about some strategies in which we can help and work with teachers this year in putting together a package for them. And on a sad note, there was a memorial service for a former teacher here in Kansas City, Kansas. Her name was Bernice Tipton. And I know a lot of people may not know her or even know of the services. But I attended in Edwardsville, a memorial service her family had honoring her. She was a former art teacher, as well as, we did team teaching together. And she passed away on January 29th. And so I went to that event. And it was, it was an honor to be there to recognize her as a teacher of what she has done. But as I said, it wasn't publicized by her family so much. But I was glad I was there to be a representative from the school district to honor what she had done in teaching students. And I'm just interested right now to, during this year, to follow my original plan from last year. And after coming on the board, I recognized that there was so much I had to do. But I'm in the process of putting together a plan just to visit the elementary schools. I taught in middle school. I know about high school. And it's my goal this year to visit elementary schools so that I can learn a little bit more.
And again, glad that we are at TA Edison. TA Edison. Little tongue twister there. My first time of actually being in the neighborhood. And I came up the back road, so I'm glad it wasn't ice, or I would have been in a ditch. Learned to change, say Google, that is not the best way to take us. So other than that, Ms. Westfall, do we have any community comments?
No, not today.
All right. Well, then we welcome our illustrious Public Library Director. Number four. Board Updates. Public Libraries, Carol Levers, Director. Good morning.
Morning, Dr. Nguyen.
Forward.
Dr. Faust.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
I'm going to share with you January 2019 statistics for the library. The first couple of slides will indicate those. And then we'll go to annual stats for 2018. Of course, our mission, vision, and values is always on our slides. And this is the circulation for January 2019. Like I said, the first three slides will indicate those. And of course, on your, well, depending on how you sit. But on my left-hand side will be the circulation by location. And then, of course, the left-hand side will be the circulation by type.
Just for purposes of explanation, these are not here. This is the only place we have these slides.
Yeah.
On screen.
Yes. We didn't get it. You didn't get it? Sorry?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And it's a pity, this, it's kind of skewed, so.
It's okay.
All right. Sorry about that. So January of 2019, you can see our circulation for print items. Unfortunately, it's the second to your, in the orange ring, it says print. And we had 33,747 item circulation in January. And it is up 21,000 prints since January 2018. And that is because we really increased our adult summer reading program. So Little Free Libraries is on the green side, and it's the lighter green accented. So it had a very huge increase of 2,249 checkouts for January 2019 compared to January 2018. We only had 618. And that was because we've been stocking them very frequently. People are really enjoying the Little Free Libraries. So the programs for January 2019. Now, the first one is the programs, and it's kind of small, and the attendance of each program's per library. And this, the bottom one is outreach programs. You know, we go out, the top is in the libraries, and of course, the bottom is outside. So Schlegel, and that is Mr. and Mrs. F.L. Schlegel Environmental Library, usually have the highest attendance in January because we have our signature program, and that is the Eagle Days. Unfortunately, it's usually a two-day event, and it was ice and snowy, so we had to close the Saturday because people couldn't get up the windy road too. So, but luckily, I mean, 618 people turned up Sunday for that. So you can imagine, it would have been double. So you could see, usually, they, the highest January. But that's just one of those things. Our third slide is also January, and that's our e-library. It's e-community. We feature two database services, Canopy and News Bank. And those, we feature them on our Instagram, and they both return the highest usage numbers we have ever seen since their inception. But we also promoted Martin Luther King's collection on Canopy. I mean, it was there. We just promoted it on Instagram, sorry. And we think we credited that to the increase in our e-services. So we highlighted our e-community during winter months because that's when we see the highest return. A lot of people don't want to come to the library when it's cold. Well, I shouldn't say "a lot" because more.
There you go.
You know, we, we, we get a lot of people. I mean, they want to come, stay warm, et cetera. But basically, a lot of people would rather, now that we have our e-community, would rather stay indoors and read and, and search and do whatever they need to do because we brought the library to them. So we highlighted our e-community during this winter time. And of course, we, we found out that we had a 137% increase in e-card signup because of our advertising. And now we're going to go and explain the year 2018 circulation. So our 2018 circulation of 9,777, sorry, 977,304 is higher than 2017. We had about 80,000 total circs increase in last year. We have seen an increase basically in our digital side. Our AV materials, and that is on the orange side, AV means DVDs, CDs, et cetera. They're the ones that really shot up. Our AV materials are the highest circling in the winter months. But obviously, in the summer months, our print, it's just the opposite. Materials circ more. When we talk about our programs, whether it's in-house or outreach, again, our 2018 circulation, we have, our mobile library attendance was up for 2018 as more stops have been advertised, resulting in more people and places participating. So our overall attendance is up from 2017, in 2017, by 2,000. And that is attributed to Day of the Dead program and, of course, our library in the park. So our e-community, and that's our e-library, in 2017, we had online participation of 124,752 items. And that is when you add the two together, the reading total and the database access. And in 2018, we saw an increase of 40,369 items. That's more totaling, a total between the two is 165,121 items were circulating in 2018. So Hoopla and Tumble Books are still our top most frequently used online services, and we saw an increase in usage for the online Kansas City Star newspaper. We, sorry, upcoming programs, we will have an author event again. A conversation with Kiki Swinson and Tiffany Warren will be at the Readings Convention Center, April 13th, at 2:30 PM. And people can RSVP online. Thank you. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. No, no, Ms. Levers.
I'm sorry.
We have a present.
Yes, you do.
Please.
And last month, I also gave you questions about Black Easter Month. And we have.
And a nice calendar.
And I've sent that to everybody. So a lot of people are coming in and, and just taking part in answering those questions. And we have some items to give them, and they just, it's wonderful to see them. If you ever have a chance to come to the main library, both entrances have all the people on the wall. And if you don't have the answer, you go to the wall and you get the answers for Black Easter Month.
Is that in all the libraries?
We have programs in all the libraries. I don't have programs, but I will keep it.
I mean, the answers is that for all of them?
No, that's just mains, really. Each one, each library has a different pro, different programs. Like we have Emmettow at West Wyandotte. Very great program, people, a lot of people forgot about it. They had it on their, you know, I mean, in their minds, I guess. But the day they forgot about it, and they called back and said, "We missed it, we're so sorry." But fortunately, the gentleman that presented, he has a book coming up in March, or May, I think it is. And he says, we asked him, he'll come back to sign the book, and then we'll just kind of let the people know we're going to do a read.
Right. It was on our other flyer.
Yes. That's what I was thinking. If I don't have it in here, I'll bring you handouts, just to remind you of upcoming. Okay?
Dave, Dave Tell, the professor.
Yes.
Where's he from?
Ah, they said from Lawrence.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah, I can get you all that info.
It was on that nice flyer.
Yeah.
But that, we'll have this in our library, this presentation.
I just added it, so it'll be refreshed. Refresh, I'm so sorry.
We're having a little challenges in the morning. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Levers?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Drew? Ms. Tuschman?
Ashley, Cynthia is going to present the, Cynthia's going to do the presentation today on our vacancy report.
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Faust, and board members.
Good morning.
Are you able to change the report?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I can serve.
You can see it?
Yes.
It's not on the card. I refresh it.
It drops down in the little PowerPoint. That is, that's skipping down the right-hand corner.
It's skipping. It's skipping.
It just skips down here. Yes, please.
She just, just came up.
I'm happy to provide for you a summary of our recruitment activity in a couple of different ways. Number one, we'll talk about our January summary for our vacancy report. Number two, we'll talk about some of those areas that we will be going into over the next three months with respect to recruitment activity, business events, and anywhere where we'll have an opportunity to speak to potential applicants of diverse backgrounds for the 2019 and 2020 school year, as well as any of those vacancies that we have left right now. On the second page, that's entitled, "The Recruitment Summary for January 2018." Oh, is, is what it said? My copy says.
Eighteen. Yeah. Mine says eighteen.
All right. So forgive me for that. Thank you. And so, as you can see, we have 25 vacancies, seven are in general education, teachers throughout the district in high school, middle school, and elementary. And we also have 18 special education teacher vacancies. However, that does represent 98.7% of our vacancies being filled at this present time. Some of the activities that we are using in order to not only continue to fill some of those vacancies, but also to look at 2019 and 2020, is the fact that from last semester, during the spring semester of 2018 versus now, we are actually scheduled to be in about 33 different areas externally in order to make sure that we have a great diverse pool of candidates for our teachers, as well as for other certified and classified positions. Today, I'll just talk a little bit more about the teacher side of things. Today, I'll just talk a little bit more about the teacher side of things. This represents seven new events, or seven events that we have never attended before, especially within the past 10 years. So I'd like to now go to page three of your document. And what you will see here are recruitment activities that the individuals who have designed these activities have said to us that there are going to be, as best to their knowledge of the individuals who have signed up to participate as applicants on the teacher's side, a pool of individuals who represent about 25% or more of diverse applicants. So that's in the area of our black teachers, our potential Hispanic teachers, as well as Asian-Americans and American Indian. So with that in mind, what you see on the next three pages, pages three through six, in red, are the seven new events that we are participating in. One of the things that I'm really excited about is that one of the board members, Dr. Jaeger, expressed, and that's on page four that I'm at right now. The Big 12 Conference, that is going to consist of several hundred individuals who are coming for the black student government. And I'm happy to report that we will have a team of individuals who will participate there. We have booths available. They are providing us an opportunity to interview before as well as after that actual career fair portion. And so we're going to be well represented in Columbia, Missouri at that time. On page five that you see, one of the things that we are also excited about, statistically, you may not know, is that 2% of the black male population are teachers. So it's a very slim opportunity to be able to attract our black males into the teaching force. And so with respect to that, Mid-America Nazarene has a program that has been in existence for two years where they are able to provide a black male teacher corp to us. And so this is the first year that we are actually participating in that event. And what that will provide is that they have supported through intensive assistance, they've gone out and recruited black males to get into the teaching force. Their particular program is modeled after a program called Call Me Mister. And so with respect to that program, it actually allows us to champion those respective teachers who wish to be in our school district during their junior and senior college years with the opportunity then to go through a longer period of time of student teaching, a longer period of time to have mentors assigned out of our school district, as well as then to be able to offer them actual opportunities once they are graduating. So that actual event begins with a kickoff where one of the administrators will be accompanying me. And we're going to spend several hours on a particular day that the teachers are coming in in this area. Their family members are coming in. We'll get a chance to meet them and tell them all about our district, leave some information. And within a 48-hour period, they will get to choose which school district they wish to participate in this program with. So we're going to give it our best and make sure that they know who we are at KCK. The other page of page six, one of the things that we are particularly excited about is the fact that we are actually spearheading a virtual interview day. And that will consist of about 20 or so colleges in Texas and Illinois of diverse populations, diverse schools and colleges. And we have a massive advertisement that is going through social media by also making sure that our job postings are listed in a variety of areas with respect to those campuses, touching student organizations of diverse populations. And once we get that word out, what will happen is that they will be able during one of the weeks in March to actually be with us virtually to actually have an interview. Based on those interviews that will be conducted by an administrator from our district as well as an HR representative together, asking those questions just for an initial pre-screening, then those individuals who make it through that particular pre-screen will be invited to Kansas City. And we're going to pull out all the stops in terms of making sure that when they are invited later on in March and early April, they have an opportunity not to just come for an interview, but they'll also have an opportunity to tour our community. Real estate as well as apartment guides are going to be available to talk to them about how it is to live here and to make sure that they have access and know about our community and how if they decide to come onboard with us, we'll spearhead some of that so that they are attached and begin to have a relationship with KCK and our surrounding efforts. In addition to that, everything about driver's licenses and changing it and just making sure that they know that we want them here. Last but not least, they'll have a final interview with administrators who have openings at that time. And so primarily, this will probably be a group, whether it's new teachers or experienced teachers who wish to come to this area. They actually will have an opportunity to meet with all of the principals in their respective content areas. If they're elementary, they'll see elementary. If they are in high schools with particular content areas, we'll match them with them. For pages then that are left, seven through 10, I won't go through each page, but I wanted to let you know that when you see these additional events, these are events that we have primarily attended for several years. And it provides a population of, especially of hard-to-fill areas. Teachers that are coming from math, science, special education. From time to time, when we identify the career technical education or those things that we need to support the pathways, then we have had an opportunity in the past to gain teachers from the respective schools that you see on page seven through 10. So those are the things that we're going to be doing, especially over the next 60 days. And usually, I believe the board usually would like me by June 1st or at least in June for the past couple of years to provide you with what the outcomes have been from that. The amount of people that we saw, what have we had to date, and how that is matching toward the amount of vacancies that we have. So I'll come back with that.
Questions for, questions?
I don't have a question.
Okay.
But I'd like to say thank you very much for all the hard work you're doing to increase our recruitment and retention. It's very exciting to see the seven new events. And I know that you've worked long hours to get all this together. But thank you very much on behalf of our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. I like, go ahead.
I have a question. Now, when you're presenting materials to the perspectives, does it show diversity? I'm giving the example, when I was recruited to go to school in Iowa and Wisconsin, I never saw myself. So it's critical, if we're saying we have diversity in your print materials, whatever you put out, they need to see that we have a large Hispanic population.
Yes.
You're blacks, you're Asian. And it's because I always told them, I ended up going to one of the schools, but you know, we never saw ourselves.
Right.
You never saw people like you to possibly recruit you. I'm not saying that it takes a black person to recruit another, but it does help when you can see yourself. And when you never see yourself, then you begin to question, I don't know. Because you, but I'm just asking, do you have that?
Yes.
In your materials?
We do, we do. And I'm real excited because in the next couple of weeks, you'll see even more of that with some exciting things that Ms. Melissa Fears and I have been working on with her team. And so banners have always included that. I don't know, about a year ago, I placed all the banners with some of the giveaways that we were given at one of the board meetings. And that was prominently displayed there, administrators, teachers, things of that nature. But the new information that's coming out to support these efforts, Melissa and her team has been working hard on. And so that will be released. And I'll make sure that the board sees that.
I would appreciate that because some people, you get, you say one thing, then we hear something else. So you're trying to figure out, okay, somewhere in the middle, it all has to come together.
Okay.
And it's so critical because we hear from parents all the time. I know what you're saying, but what they see is the end result. That's a problem. And saying it and seeing it is two different things. So we got to really, really, really appreciate this, but just hope the end results. We do see something and parents are able to see it and actually believe us because we're saying it, but when you don't see it, that's two different things.
I can appreciate that.
Something that I would also encourage the board. We do a, we do a variety of recruitment events. However, we do several that are at the district office. And if you want to come and literally just see it in its authenticity, then I would recommend you just come and see it. Because again, I mean, I don't know what they're saying, but I can tell you what's, I mean, our flyers are there. And so the print is there. I mean, I understand if someone doesn't get hired, they may have a disgruntled, well, they didn't choose me because I'm this way. But what I can say is that the print is there. And so I would even welcome, all you just come, all you have to do is walk in. And I think, you know, the prospective hires are there. And I mean, just meeting, meeting and greeting them would be great. Because we did, how many did we do this past summer?
From June 1st through August 6th, we did 10. The only week that we missed was the Fourth of July week. Every week, we had a district career fair. And prior to that, throughout the nine-month period of last year, we actually conducted four, four major events that were in the district at our sites. We also participated at Slago's event where they actually put together a career fair. And we had one of the first booths as you walked in. Several of you actually attended that with me.
So you can put them on our calendar so we'll know.
Okay.
All right.
I would first like to say thank you for quickly responding to the Big 12 Conference because that is a conference that encompasses many states. And schools, the large and small schools attend that conference every year as it rotates and is student-led. That's very important to understand if you're not familiar with the Big 12 Conference on Black Student Government, is that it is student-led. Students run it, students organize it, students meet. And so they will be there with their advisors. Okay? So I really appreciate that. I will be speaking at the conference as well on Friday and Saturday. They've asked me to do two slots so that I could be sure to help students understand the importance of leadership and giving back to the community. So I do want to ask, because the advisors will be there, do they have takeaways that advisors can, will you meet with the advisors or will you have an opportunity to talk to them, to give them additional resources to connect with us? Because I was invited to a luncheon as well. So any way I can help you while I'm down there as well to help spread the word or talk to advisors to let them understand about our district and culture, I'll be happy to assist in that area.
Well, I'll make sure that you have a supply of information. It's my understanding from the organizers that we'll only have that period of time where the career fair is going on. We asked if we could actually go into some of those separate meetings. And they said no, that that was really internally for the individuals who will be attending the students.
Okay, great.
And so that's why we're going to take advantage of either the interviews before the event or right after the event for that short period of time that they're allowing us in.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Again, thank you. And help me remember, have we, for this year, gotten, I think we got statistics, not only of who you visited with at these recruitment trips, but how many actually were signed? We got that, I know, last year.
Yes. And I can provide at least what's happened over the past four months. Now that we're getting into this.
Okay.
That's what I meant by, at least I can give you an overall.
Right.
Wrap-up, like right at the end of May, first of June.
Because I'm not, you know, we'd, I'll dig back into our documents to see because just looking at slide eight, and I'm always poking Dr. Faust about page numbers. So thank you for the page numbers.
Okay.
Little things. You know, how many do you get from Cape Girardeau, Southeast Missouri State?
We only attended there for the past two years. And one of the reasons is that they give a great scholarship to primarily that St. Louis and Illinois-area students because they have reciprocity with the state of Illinois. And that's one of their more diverse populations that they are attracting there. The second thing, however, is we have been getting some of our hard-to-fill students from there. So the math students and one of our special education students, excuse me, students, actually, teachers.
Teachers.
Are coming, right. They are coming from there. And they have a great progressive teacher makerspace area that is actually been written about. So teachers are coming out of that area with some really good background.
Because on the surface, you would not expect it.
Wouldn't even know that, yes, yes.
That's what we need to know.
Just kind of some research that we try to do before we decide.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like reported to the superintendent, Dr. Faust. Number five.
So we're ready for Cindy.
Why we're here. Welcome, Cindy Cope, Principal TA Elementary.
TA Edison, it is a very well-cup secret. As you were saying, you come up through the apartment complexes. Four apartment complexes actually feed into TA Edison. We are literally three blocks from Johnson County and about a mile and a half from Oklahoma Joe's over there in Missouri. And we frequent there often. Have you not had their barbecue?
I'm trying to keep myself from saying, that is lunch?
Yes, that, yes, we catered that in for lunch. Oh, can't cater lunch.
Kept drawing it out, okay, I did it.
There you go, there you go.
Correction, Kansas City Joe's.
Right, yes, but we still call it.
We knew what you're talking about.
When you say that, everyone's, what, what, what? Okay, so welcome, welcome. We're glad that you all found our school today and we're glad that you're here. We're very, very excited that you're here today. TA Edison was built in 1954. And in 2012, we had an addition added on to the school, which more than doubled the size of the school. So you'll be able to see that as you go through today. It was, the original building was an L-shaped. This was the bottom part of the backwards L and then one hallway. We had a trailer out back that housed some of our friends. And then we put on a new hall, well, a new wing, two new wings here in a nice library. So we're excited to show you that in a few minutes. Here at TA Edison, we have, like you all were saying earlier, a lot of diversity. We have about, about 70% of our kids are Hispanic, about 14% of our kids are white, and about 15% black, and 1% other, which is really a family of two. 44% of our kids are ELL students. We have 14 general education classrooms. We have this, sorry. We have two preschool classrooms, which each serve a morning and an afternoon session of preschool. We also have two ED classrooms, special education classrooms, that are housed here at TA Edison, which you'll meet some of those students as we walk through in a little while, too. Always, always an adventure walking down the hallway. So, so that I wasn't doing all the talking, I did ask Jessica Culver, my instructional coach, our instructional coach, to come up and talk to us a little bit about our Wednesday afternoons and what that looks like.
Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm gonna get, oh, sorry. It's okay. So good morning, everybody. I am super excited to see everybody and to be here. Let me get my paper adjusted. So my name is Jessica Culver. And like Mrs. Cope said, I am the instructional coach here for kindergarten through fifth grade, all contents at TA Edison. I'm very thankful that I landed here this year. It has been a wonderful school. And the teachers work so hard, the students work hard. It is just a fabulous place to be. And I know you guys are going to see that when you walk around today. So some of the things that we are working on here is to implement the district goals of DQ1, DQ8, and DQ9. So with that, like Mrs. Cope said, our Wednesday afternoons have become a very powerful piece. And our PD is only as powerful as what we practice. So we are making big shifts in what our professional development looks like. And we have a growth mindset here at TA Edison. It used to be a stand and deliver, content-based. And now we're moving more away from that so that we have a more powerful teacher-centered professional development. So with that, some of the key areas that I would like So with that, some of the key areas that I would like to highlight is our data-driven instruction. So this has been a very exciting, it is a very exciting time at, for KCK and for TA Edison. So we are now doing weekly data-focused meetings. And in these meetings, the teachers are looking for gaps. They are analyzing authentic student work. Some of it's CAP interim data that is just a little bit, like maybe just a couple of days old that they're looking at. Some of it might be an exit slip from our new curriculum that we're using that they're analyzing to make our instruction have more rigor and to meet the needs of their students in, basically in real time, like it's happening in real time. So one of the other things that we're focusing on is instructional planning. So this is taking place in our, either our PLCs, which are our grade-level PLCs, or on Wednesdays. So when we work as teams, we're working to identify what is the critical content? What do we need to be focusing on? So we have our state standards. So like never before, our teachers are looking at the standards. They're using their own words to describe what the standards are. And then after they do that, they're making responsive choices for the needs of their class, for the needs of each student. They're talking together. And one of our favorite things, we've called it Power PLCs. So we are on Wednesday afternoons, because that's the only time we can get together as a school. Each grade level is breaking up into Power PLCs. Some of them have named their groups, they have some fun little names with them. But what they're doing is we have our support people, like our PE teachers, our art teachers, our computer teachers. Each one of those and all of our pairs have been assigned to a grade-level PLC. And what they're doing is they are helping the teachers to be there for support. So even like in art, art, the, the grade level that she supports, she is pulling in extra writing to support those Power PLCs. Our gym teacher supports kindergarten. So he was working on sight words, jumping up and down, working on sight words. So it's been a very powerful, we call it Power PLCs because it does, it has a great impact. So teaching is an art and a craft. So we use our time as best we can to practice and perfect that craft. And in our PD time, so on our Wednesday time, we're able to use our district learning. So we use our district learning and we use that time to practice with each other, to look at our content and practice our instruction. Some of our techniques that we're using is from the district learning around stretch it and accountable talk. So those are some things that as you walk around today, we want you to really look at, who's doing the talking? Is it the teacher or is it the students? We're really focusing and we've used our time wisely and effectively so that the students have the power over their learning. So I'm very passionate about the work we're doing here and I could really go on forever. But I want you guys to look at, so up on the little projector, we have our model of instruction. And so some of the things I want to point out is that we are really, really using this for our planning. We're using it for our grade-level PLCs, we're using it for our Wednesday PD time. So we're looking at the standards, our criteria for success. We're helping students elaborate on content, process new content. And then the collaboration piece, that's what's really changed and shifted, is collaborating. We're not an island, no teacher is an island. We're working together to make the shift so that our instruction has more rigor and really supports our students here. Because the teachers really have high expectations. Mrs. Cope has high expectations and the students know that and they're meeting that. And they're going above that because they are the hard workers here. So as you walk around today, I want you to notice, you might see some morning meetings. So in those morning meetings, one of the things that they've been able to do in their Power PLCs is notice the gaps from the CAP. So CAP is something that's, is a test that's given for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. But we've had, as a school, we've looked at our CAP data. And we asked the question, well, where can we supplement, where can we enrich our students' learning? So they're plugging it into things like morning message that they're already doing. They're pulling small groups back to help with that CAP data. So you might see that in morning meeting this morning. Some of the other things you might see is students engaged in work around our new resources of Eureka Math. So you might see some of that. And then you might see some F and P, our new F and P resources being used in either small group or whole group IRAs being, that are going on. So the last thing is, I want you to look for accountable talk and student engagement, because they're, they're the real superstars. The students here are the MVPs. They're the ones that are showing up in the cold and the wet and the rain with a smiling face. And we're just happy that we can be here for them. Does anybody have any questions? Yes.
I do. So how many gifted students do you have here? And research shows that sometimes when English is a second language, sometimes we overlook those who may be gifted. So how many do you have? And what does your plan generally look like to make sure that you're capturing those who may be gifted and need additional support in that area?
So I can't speak to the numbers, but I can talk about, um, the accountable talk is something that we have been working on so that we have those talking stems available to all students to help pull some of those conversations out and stretch their thinking. But Mrs. Cope, do you have numbers?
Yes. Three. We have three students that are identified as gifted. Um, we have several in the sit process right now. Um, Ms. Bonis is the gifted teacher that is assigned to TA Edison. And she works with several, what she calls challenger groups, I believe she calls them that, where she comes in, uh, once a week or so, and works with kids that we are wondering. And she pulls those kids out and starts to, um, kind of spark some of that creativity and provide some of those outside enrichment activities for some of those kids that we're looking at and pursuing to see if we can capture some more. Absolutely, that is something that is very important to us. The program within the district has a lot to offer and we want more kids to be able to take advantage of that.
In our last meeting, we had talked about the Saturday. So that Monday, Dr. Coven met with the cabinet and we were asking, how do we actually identify students? And so we realized that we're identifying, um, using teacher and parent, um, recommendations. So we are currently looking at a different model of how we identify students. So that will be something that we'll roll out next year. Because I know that we have more than, you know, one kindergartner for the entire district.
Yeah.
And three students. But we want to make sure that what we're doing is not just putting all the weight on the teacher to identify the student, but giving them, um, resources and tools to assist in the identification process.
Thank you.
What's your student-teacher ratio?
We currently have two student-teachers. We have one that is in Ms. Hollingsworth's class.
No, no, not student-teacher.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought student-teacher, so, okay.
I can tell you about those two.
Really, you're gonna make me answer? Because right now, it's really low.
I didn't know if you knew.
No, we do. Um, it's, it's far below the expectation. Shh, yes, don't tell anybody.
Right.
Okay.
Between you and me.
Okay. It's about 18 to 1.
Oh, that's awesome.
It is awesome, absolutely, but it's far below. We do expect to lose at least one teacher for next year, possibly two. Um, I'm still working with some of my friendly support friends back here on maybe not losing two. But we will be losing one teacher next year, so it will go up. We do have two student-teachers in the district as well. Yes. And a, another practicum teacher that's going to be joining us in a couple of weeks. So we're excited to have that.
Well, what about your support in terms of pairs?
Para?
Just one?
Or parents?
No, not parents, pairs.
We have, um, many paras, because we have, um, two ED classrooms, special education classrooms. So between the two classrooms, we have five special ed paras.
Okay.
We have, um, um, each preschool has an aide. Um, we have an ESL aide, um, and, let's see, who am I missing? Oh, we have an SLC, thank you, an SLC para as well. So we feel, um, very fortunate in the support staff that we have because we don't limit ourselves. We are a, um, it takes a village, kind of, we're still in that old 80s kind of theme thing where it takes the village, because it takes all of us. So they don't stay in their own domain, we all work out together.
What about your parental support, your PTA?
Uh, we have no PTA. We have parents that singly volunteer. We have sent out PTA letters and trying to get, and I will get one or two parents that will come into that meeting and, um, they don't find me nearly as amusing as I find me. So they aren't as excited, no, I'm just, um, we, um, but we have parents that will volunteer to come in and do things. But at conference time, we have about a 95% attendance rate. And that is partially parent or teacher's hound until you come in. And, and that's, they know that they're going to get hounded until they come in, so they do come in. Um, and on family nights, we have huge numbers that are coming in. So we've got great parent support that way, just not in an active PTA.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and you provided us great numbers for your student demographics. What's your staff demographics?
How many of each?
Correct.
Okay. Um, we have, let's see, I have one secretary who is phenomenal, Ms. Iris at the front. Um, one full-time nurse. Um, two SLC teachers, full-time. Um, two special education ED teachers. Um, and that's the students with emotional disturbances.
And what's their ethnic identity, demographics?
Oh, everybody. Um, I have one African-American teacher, one black teacher, and one male teacher.
And your total teacher staff number is what, again?
Um, we are about, about 50 teachers in the bill, or 50 staff members in the building at any one time. Okay, sorry, we have a black para. Couple of black paras.
Ballpork figure, you're good, you're good.
Five, five blacks.
We can find it.
And a man.
And a man.
And a man.
One African-American, one man.
Yeah. Sorry.
All right, we're looking forward to the next phase.
Well, my teachers are looking forward to having you guys in the building and, um, and being honored by having your presence here.
Well, I came early, so I already know the library is fantastic.
Yes.
So it's phenomenal.
May I speak on the libraries for a moment? I forgot to call out, um, Ms. Levers. Um, we have a library aide, we do not have a librarian. That's a long story, but we don't have a librarian right now. We have a library aide, who bless her heart, is 70 years old and still working. Fabulous. But she has had double hip replacement this year, or knee.
Is it hip or knee?
Knee, hips, okay. Anyway, so we have not had, there's typically not a substitute for library aides. Um, but that would put us without any library checkout at all. So the library has fabulously supported us. Candy Hoffman comes in and is checking out kids and shelving books. She's been phenomenal. So I wanted, I do want to thank the libraries for that. So one of the substitutes that we have coming in is our library aide's 92-year-old mother.
Oh, stop it.
Yes. So Ms. Madge is in the library today. And so everybody can say hello to Ms. Madge, who has been in the district, I think, for most of those 92 years. Um, but she used to work at preschool. So she is here on Tuesdays and Thursdays unless it's icy.
It's icy today, she's in.
Oh, she didn't come in today?
And it's icy today.
Oh, she didn't come in today, so we won't see Ms. Madge.
We appreciate that.
Yes, we do, yes, we do. And she is very, very, she's awesome, she is awesome. The kids love her. And this is the highlight of her week is coming in and being able to work for her daughter, for her 70-year-old daughter that had double hip replacement. Anyway, thank you for that, thank you, Carol.
Well, just longevity. You get longevity pay, maybe.
We're going to split into two groups and we're going to walk through the building. Anybody that would like to join us? And, uh, so we'll go ahead and, and kind of head out and head that way. Let me also say that this is a former kindergarten classroom in the old part of the building. Now it's the music room, as you can tell. But this restroom right here, um, might be for younger children. The toilet is shorter. It is physically challenging. So if you enjoy a challenge, please help yourself here. Otherwise, we have restroom in the, um, front office area or in the teacher's lounge. So I just want you to be comfortable and we don't want to have to have a scream from, we don't want to call 911 when there's a board meeting here today.
All right, thank you.
Too much fun? Yes. Thank you. Let me go ahead and correct one thing on the tour. We have a student in our school that strips his clothes off. And so that might have been misconstrued. We do not have a stripper teacher. We have a stripper of a student, so therefore we avoided that classroom. I just, I just want that on the record, please. Could you type that into the notes? Yes, that was a little confusion. Okay, so what feedback do you have for me? What, what, what great things did you guys see?
I, uh, I have to say, everything was beautifully done. There is definite student engagement with accountable talk. I went into one of the classrooms, I believe it was a kindergarten classroom, and before I could even say anything to the student, the students start talking to me about the content of what they were working on. And so I, I thought that was excellent, especially at such a young age. But I, I love the library, it is beautiful. I would like to, um,
I told you.
For us to try to get a permanent librarian there. And in discussing with several others, maybe on the weekend, that library can be open for parents to bring children in to be able to read books and utilize that. Because it would be a greater way for them to utilize the library rather than having to drive all the way to the main or any of the others. With this new library, it offers everything within this neighborhood, so it would be beneficial. Uh, I love the decorations that were with, you know, in the halls and everything. It's just, everything is user-friendly. And then the, the staff that I saw passing through, speaking, saying hello, good morning, uh, very personable. And I applaud you on everything.
Thank you.
As well as with the teachers. Uh, I did see that the kids were engaged. My old-school way was teachers standing in front of the classroom and teaching the kids, listen. But these kids were interactive in everything that they did in the classrooms I saw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to say, and, and I taught for 30 years. And I remember when we started First Things First. And we were all told that we would have these idea classrooms, 15 to 1. And you pretty much have that.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a blessing. And I, I understand not wanting to get the word out if others hear, but you are blessed that you do have that.
I agree.
You could tell when you entered the building, the calmness. And, and that's important, because I've been in some and you, I would be afraid. But it's nice that it's calm and I like the different learning centers. The kids are rotating. Everybody's engaged, from the preschoolers, from what I could see. We didn't go in every room, but they seem to be engaged. They're working on something and they're at different levels. And they can at least explain to you what they're doing. And if they didn't know, it's nice when you can say, because the little girl said, I'm not sure, this is not right. Well, then what do you need to do? I need to ask questions. And that's good, and that's important. And like, the blessing is that 18 to 1.
Yes, agreed.
That's what it's going to have to be in order for our kids to be more successful. And we have to keep challenging them. And the only thing, and I, I mean no disrespect and take it in the spirit that is given, as much as we can, if we can get the diversity part, because it's crucial. Kids need to see themselves. It doesn't mean that if everyone's white, you can't be taught. Everybody cares and that's important. But you just need to see yourself. That would be my biggest thing. You need to see yourself. And I applaud you, I appreciate your spirit, because it starts from the top.
Right.
If you have passion and you're excited and after, I thought you said you've been doing it for 26, you're still excited about learning.
It's here.
And it starts at the top. If you're not excited and you're just like, oh, man, I gotta, four more years, I gotta make this, okay. How can I get through this? And I don't see that in you. I see the desire to want the best for the kids.
Thank you, that is important to me, thank you.
So if you got it, it's a blessing. So please don't stop. Just keep doing what you're doing. And one of your teachers asked, she wanted to know, why did we stop having the annual student art show? I told her I didn't know, but I would ask that question and see what we can do to get it going.
I'm going to guess that was my art teacher that asked that question.
Yes. So that's important, because we want to reach out. And if that makes her happy and we can keep her going, let's do what we need to do. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well, I'm going to go off the rail.
Okay.
I always do.
Going rogue, here we go.
Here we go.
Love it.
Um, thinking about what Ms. Drew said, but also thinking about your comments about, um, the, the apartment complex is feeding the school. And I don't know your service area, but years ago, we talked about, and I wasn't on the board then, uh, schools being beacon schools, so that they serve the community after hours. And I thought, when you talked about Saturday, to what extent, and it, and you never know. On one day, you could have every kid in the neighborhood here. And the other day, you have no one here, if you open up after hours. But, but just an idea, um, and we've never discussed it as a board as well. And, you know, And, you know, Budget Man's looking at me like, are you talking to me? Yes, I am. But, but, and resources are resources. But for, for our, our school, like a neighborhood school, to be a beacon school, to serve so much more of the service area after hours, I just, I don't know how that would look. But, but something to think about, and I'll, I'll start bringing it up and talking about it because we only have, you know, however many neighborhood schools whose neighborhoods could use the same.
Absolutely.
Have the same experiences. And it may, I mean, it just may help, but I don't, I don't see any downside to it other than, you know, the cost. And that's not a downside.
Right.
But, but just the thought of engaging parents, engaging those other family members, because we have two in two thousand families we serve in addition to students. So, I'm off the rail and I'll, I'll get back on by the time we get back.
Perfect. I do want to say that one of the things that we are proud of is that our kids do come back to school, we can't get them to go home after school, they come back to school to play.
Yeah.
This is where they hang. Some for the internet that's around the building, the older people are watching their younger siblings. But if, I don't know if anybody noticed, but in the back playground, we do, we did have just some new soccer goals put up.
Right.
And right out here in this field, we've worked for this, these soccer goals out here for a very long time because our community predominantly likes soccer. And they have, we've had little ones out here before, we're hoping that these last, they're a little more sturdier than the ones we had before. But since this is such a hub for people to come and hang, and parents perceive it as a safe place for their children to go, then that would be a great opportunity too, if we could open the building even for those things. I, I do believe that that would be utilized here in this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For thinking like me.
I have two classes that I want to visit afterwards. And a quick discussion about, it'll be with our ELL. I have some questions surrounding that, so if you can just entertain.
Sure.
Two classrooms that I would like to see and just start ELL questions.
Okay.
So, I think our director of ELL is behind you. Yeah, so we can stay back and we can walk some of those classrooms.
Okay. Did you have particular rooms in mind?
I do, but I'll.
Okay, tell me later, okay.
Oh, what can they say? It is, like I said earlier, it is so great to see the energy in the learning of the kids. When I was here earlier this fall, just, just seeing the consistency from kindergarten to kindergarten to classroom. Each teacher's putting their own little tweaks on that curriculum according to their kids that they have in their rooms. But they're teaching the same skills. And their, their classroom management is wonderful. And they change from one little circle to the other. The kids just automatically know what to do, they get up and do and whatnot. I mean, it's, to me, it's amazing what we are expecting out of our children and what they are giving back to us. It shows that if we raise that bar a little bit higher, our kids will come up there.
Absolutely.
And we just have to have faith in them and show them that. And then the one little boy that ran up to me in the ED room, remembered me from when I was here this fall, he says, remember? You remember me? I said, from where? Because I couldn't remember so many schools. And he goes, when you were here, you were in Ms. Kopp's office. I said, yes. And I had told him, if he ever saw me, to come up and tell. And he remembered. And that was, that was very heartwarming. But it's, yeah, just a wonderful building.
And I appreciate you saying that because I, this is an everyday of this building. This is not just today, yes, we knew you were coming, yes, we're wearing our Sunday clothes, but this is everyday in our building. And so, I appreciate you saying that, to show that consistency. And that is why, at the beginning, I said, I'm so grateful to be at this place because of these people. It is, it's all of us working together and it's, and it's the kids, the kids are awesome. So, very, thank you for saying that.
I too, it's phenomenal. The whole building's phenomenal. Because when I first walked in here, I was attracted to all the positive posters and bulletin boards that you saw. I saw so many positive images that it reeks positive. You know, when you walk in, you just feel positive. So every day, and every where you turn, there's positivity, so. And to see the young people, they're just, my babies are just happy, you know, and they look like they're, you can tell they're enjoying the learning experience. When I went into ED class, they came up and hugged me and told me their names, and, you know. Then I went into the, the preschool class, and the little girl was telling me her colors and how many, and counting for me, and she says, and I'll give you the purple airplane because she got purple on. You know? And to know all their colors in preschool and this far along, you can tell they were excited about learning. You know, it's not somebody's, I didn't notice in any classroom, anybody pulling back, not being engaged in what was happening in the classroom. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to say, it was a great positive experience, having a kindergartner of my own. I always loved seeing the little students, as well as the older students who are there and learning and modeling behavior. And I also liked to see that the kids weren't made to just walk in some perfect line in the hallway. I think it matters that it's okay to just walk in the hallway without saying, bubbling your mouth, hold your arms. They were quiet and they were walking and not disruptive, but it wasn't like it was a firm stern, do what I say or you're gonna get in trouble. I liked the atmosphere of, I trust you to do the right thing. And the students and the atmosphere of the teachers and how they respected the students to allow them to walk quietly in the hallway without being made to stand in some format. And I really enjoyed seeing the learning. I did have a question like, where are the books? Why aren't they learning from a standard book? And I asked Alan that, and he was like, well, we don't quite just go book format anymore, which is different. And you'll see that model. So, I looked a little more about how they write in their own notebook and how they, and which is the same thing that are done in other schools. So it is consistency around the district of, how is being taught, what is being taught, what is seen, what is, you know, what is going on. So my kindergartner, because I, again, I have children in the district, what he's learning now, this week, is the similar thing that they're learning this week at this school. So that's the consistency that we expect to see and that we saw also in the first-grade class. We went to the first-grade class, because my child is also in first grade. Again, same sentence structure, same writing, same words, same thing. And so it's really good to see that consistency. So I really appreciated that. The question I asked about the Title I funds and how it's being used in the schools and if parents are giving input, since there's not a PTA. So, feedback for that area would be to, like, for instance, we helped those classes for adults over at Hazel Grove that was district-sponsored, where the adults could come in on Saturday and learn and get the different skills. So I was thinking maybe, because Title I, that reading and math component, to have additional efforts to help parents help their child. Because as we know, parents have to do some kind of help with their child, but if they truly don't know, then it's sometimes the student teaching the parent. So to give more opportunities for how to teach your child, how to explain it, and if they're not getting concepts, to allow them the ability to say, okay, I don't even understand what this sentence is, or if I put a period or a question mark or a colon, I don't know because it's different. But to be able to maybe see additional community efforts that could be happening with that funding.
Thank you. And we do do that, not to a huge degree, but we do have family nights almost once a month, if not every other month for sure. And we do, we don't really call it classes, but they visit their child's classroom and the teacher gives out classroom helps. And we've talked a lot about the new resource and the different kind of math things they would be seeing sent home, and how to help your kids with those type of strategies, the new strategies they would be seeing. And also with reading, how to help your child with reading, especially if your child, if you're an ESL family, or ELL family, then you might not know what to ask in English to answer all the questions. And so it's some of those tips on how, you know, important questions that you could be asking. And so we do do some of those things, not to a class degree, but we do offer helps to parents like that with, and using our Title I money as well. We do provide food and treats and prizes and things like that for families that come out. But we do have a good receiving for that, even without food and rewards and stuff. Yes, props, without the props.
So one of the updates is that the art exhibition has been moved to September. It was in May, and this year's a transition year, so the work from last year is still being shown in the central office until September.
Okay.
So it has not been removed, it's just moved to a different time of the year.
Okay, so it'll be in September instead of May?
Yes.
I will give her that update.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, you're welcome anytime. Please come back and visit us, we would love to have you. I think that I'm finished for now?
Oklahoma Joe's.
Oh, yes. I'll have my secretary order that for all of us, okay. Anything special, Z-Man for anybody, fries?
We'll take the vegan plate.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now ladies, board group, item six, consent agenda. Anyone choose to set aside? Anything on the consent agenda?
I move for.
No, excuse me, I will ask to set aside D like donut.
D like donut.
And then I'll entertain your motion.
I move that we can approve the consent agenda minus D.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in seconded? Questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay? Motion passed, D set aside. And I will ask that we deal with D in the D executive session. Thank you. Number seven, payment of bills. I had some questions and I've, I have forwarded those to Mr. Covington for clarification, so that will save us time on that. Any, any questions, comments on the item seven A, payment of bills? So moved?
I move we pay.
Been moved in seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?